All right, let's get started. This is the Temecula City Council meeting of January 23rd, 2024. We're gonna have Pastor Cal Fjorver of Southwest Christian Church, followed by me doing the flag salute, so please stand. Would you pray with me? Sovereign Lord, who made the heavens and the earth and the sea and everything in them, you alone are God. There is none like you before you. All nations are a drop in the bucket. Lord, it is you who removes kings, it is you who changes rulers like a garment, and you are the same and your years have no end. Lord, we thank you that by your authority, you rule and overrule over all the affairs of men. And fathers before your face, that I come on the merits of Christ. Lord, it is by your good pleasure that we exist here today, that California exists, and it is by your grace that we enjoy much good here in Temecula. So, Lord, therefore, I pray that you would enable these leaders here to operate and practice their authority and their power in a way that would please you. Lord, we pray especially for our leaders. Thank you for this city and thank you for them. Lord, help us as citizens to honor them. Help us to respect and to pray for our leaders, to speak kindly and wisely to them. Help us to honor them well. So, Lord, would you please grant wisdom and patience to them as they lead us? Father, I pray that you continue your kindness to us, who only merit your judgment. Lord, as your word says, no governing authority exists except by what you've appointed. And I pray that you would show them great mercy today and that you would remind them that it is the humble who will be exalted, that they lead by serving well. God, I pray that you would cause their thoughts, their actions today to be ever mindful of you and of the King of Kings, your Son. So, Lord, thank you again for this meeting. Would you please bless it with your kindness? Remind them of these things. Thank you for appointing them. Thank you for our time together here. And Father, thank you for the greatest demonstration of your sovereignty and your grace and your justice in the suffering and death and resurrection of Jesus Christ in the place of all who would trust him. Bless our those who take refuge in him. May the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, our rock and our redeemer. Amen. All right, would you please join me in saluting our flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So, Madam City Clerk Assistant Vice, what are you exactly?
Deputy City Clerk.
Deputy, okay. Would you please do roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kelfis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have one presentation, and it's by Riverside County Transportation Commission regarding draft traffic relief plan. Ms. Ann is here to give that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, staff. You were all so nice to me last time when I was here. A couple of weeks ago, I thought I would come back, but I promise I won't be here in two weeks for another presentation. I promise, this is it. Okay, thank you very much. I'm really happy to be here this evening to share with you information about the 2024 Draft Traffic Relief Plan that RCTC currently has out for public review, comment, and input. And as always, I thank you very much to the City of Temecula Council and staff for your partnership with RCTC and Mayor Stewart for your service on RCTC as a commissioner. So, many of you probably know what RCTC's roles are here in Riverside County, but I think it's important that I share a few of our key areas that we focus on. RCTC was established in 1976 as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for Riverside County. We are responsible for planning, funding, and delivering transportation infrastructure and services. We are governed by 34 commissioners, 33 elected officials, one member from each city, and all five county supervisors and a governor's appointee, and that's usually the Caltrans District Eight Director. So, the entire county is represented with a vote on the RCTC board. We not only implement and fund transportation projects, it's a MetroLink service. We're one of the member agencies of MetroLink, so we fund and plan that. We provide funding for bus service. We provide funding for bicycle paths and trails and equestrian trails. So, all in all, anything that's transportation in Riverside County, we have roles and responsibilities. In both 1989 and 2002, RCTC had sales tax measures passed by the voters by over two-thirds margin, and we are responsible for the administration of the current half-cent sales tax in Riverside County. And we are also the owner-operator of the 91 and I-15 express lanes that have recently been opened. And it's because of partnerships with our member agencies that we have been able to deliver so many different projects. So, again, as I mentioned, we are responsible for partnering with member agencies as well as delivering projects across the gamut with respect to all transportation improvements. Couple of examples here. We are a key funding partner on the French Valley Parkway project, probably the biggest one to name, partner on the Smart Freeway project, which I was here a couple of weeks ago, but also park and ride facilities, as well as some of your local road improvements as well. So, we had a traffic relief plan that was approved in 2020, and that plan was based on the needs identified by local partners. We have recently done a public survey here on what's important to people in Riverside County, and we conducted a statistically valid poll asking voters across the county on what their priorities are. And the graph that I'm showing here shows residents' priorities as important or somewhat important. And you can look at the key things that show up as very important: keeping roads in good condition, pothole repairs, safe and sufficient facilities in both rural and historically disadvantaged communities, reducing congestion, traffic jams, improving safety, and keeping senior disabled and veteran bus fares low. And all of these are coming in at over 80% in terms of how important that residents in Riverside County feel that these are important. So, what is the traffic relief plan again? We are looking at developing a vision for Riverside County that is inclusive of the transportation needs that the residents are saying that are important to them. This is a countywide assessment of transportation needs, and the current draft traffic plan has billions of dollars' worth of investments within it. So, the traffic plan is a vision. It's established, it's establishing projects and programs that would be a priority for funding within the county, but what is it not? It is not funded, as I mentioned. There are billions of dollars' worth of projects and programs in this traffic relief plan, and they are not funded unless voters approve funding for those plans. So, the traffic relief plan is broken up into geographic areas. And geographic areas for RCTC are Western County, so that's basically everything from Cabazon to the west. So, the San Gregonio Pass to the west is in Western County, the Coachella Valley, all the Coachella Valley cities, and then the Palo Verde Valley, which is Blythe, and some of the unincorporated areas. I'm gonna focus tonight on Western County. So, I've got a pie chart here showing how our current draft plan summarizes where funding will be spent. Got a category of safe streets and roads showing at 8%. Safety priority for many of the local streets and roads, sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, pothole repair, bridge repair, bus shelters, anything you can think of that's on the local and regional road system that needs to be upgraded, protected, maintained, and operated is in this category. 50% of this category would be sent directly out to the Western County cities for you to decide how to spend it in your own capital improvement plans. The other 50% will be for more regional projects that impact multiple communities. Category of highways for 25%. Again, that is working on interchanges, potentially on some express lanes, auxiliary lanes, other improved, smart freeways, other improvements on the highway system. Regional connections is really important. We have communities here in Riverside County that still are trying to function on two-lane roads. I'll give some examples of regional connections. Mid-County Parkway connecting Paris with Hemet-San Jacinto. The 79 realignment project connecting Temecula through the Hemet-San Jacinto Valley up with our communities in the San Gregonio Pass. Public transportation at 25%. Bus and rail, we provide a significant amount of funding to RTA to provide bus service, as well as the other six bus transit agencies in Riverside County, along with investments in rail. Commuter assistance is those roving freeway tow trucks that you see out there who help people with a gallon of gas get their vehicle off the road into a safe place so that they are, A, safe, but also don't disrupt traffic as much. Active transportation at 3%. And environmental mitigation, which is preparing our infrastructure to deal with natural disasters, as well as being able to mitigate the impact that projects and programs can have on the environment. So, these are the categories that have been established in Western Riverside County. Examples of projects here in the Temecula area that are included in the plan, and I think this is the area that I would just want to point you, your residents, your staff towards as you are reviewing the traffic relief plan, is are we capturing projects and programs in your community that are the priorities for your community? Are these the things, kinds of things, that you think are most important? And again, there are examples of projects or programs in each of the categories I just discussed. A couple of key ones here. I've already mentioned French Valley Parkway, 79, the 15, the 215, but also being able to have additional reliable and predictable bus and transit service. So, this is a section of the plan that I highly encourage you to take a good look at to make sure that it is inclusive of your community. Another important component of sales tax measures that we've seen for over 40 years with the implementation we've had of Measure A is accountability to taxpayers. Promises made, promises kept is the basis for decisions made at RCTC, and that's promises made and promises kept to the voters of Riverside County who have entrusted our commission with the funds to be able to make these improvements. So, this plan also includes a section on accountability to taxpayers, independent audits, mandatory reviews, local voices, and local control, and I think that's an important component of sales tax measures. I would imagine more than one person is saying, but why do we need to tax ourselves some more to be able to have these improvements? And one of the key arguments for a local sales tax measure is that the funding and the decision-making is within the control of local elected officials who are accountable to their residents, who can come to their meetings, who can make their voices known, as opposed to it being funding that is not determined here locally. That's where decisions are made in Sacramento and/or in Washington DC without local accountability. Another key component for accountability to taxpayers, just like our existing sales tax measure, no more than 1% can be used for administrative salaries, and that's a key component. RCTC is a billion-dollar-a-year public agency. Most of that money is in projects and services. We have a staff of 81, but right now, we are, even with 81, we are only at about a half a percent of the total sales tax being spent on salaries. We are very heavily dependent on the private sector and having the use of consultants and contractors to deliver our work. And again, part of the accountability is coordination with our city and county counterparts. Transportation investments. We're expecting that with a one-cent sales tax over 30 years, it could result in approximately $25 billion in revenue to be able to fund the programs and projects in this plan. Down below on the slide, you can see in Western County, the majority of the population, the majority of the revenues are generated here in Western County. So, we predict, project that about $20 billion over 30 years would be in Western County, $5 billion in Coachella Valley, and $100 million out in the Blythe area. So, what do the residents we polled in the city of Temecula say about this? And I know that that's important for all of you. Again, 82% of countywide voters see a need for transportation funding. 67% of Riverside County voters initially support a transportation funding measure, and 62% of the voters in this area that were polled initially support a transportation funding measure. So, it's very clear that the needs are great and understanding that there is a need for additional funding is great. And in terms of, is this the right plan for the county? That's why we're out here, going out to city council meetings. We're going to public meetings, community group meetings, so that we can solicit the input so that when we do have a plan, that it is a plan that reflects our community and your voice, your plan. It's important. This slide shows all of the different ways people can take a look at the plan. We have an interactive website so people can narrow down on things that are of most interest to them, and your input is important, and we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. I will also share, the commission has made no decision at this point as to whether or not this traffic relief plan is something that will be put before the voters in 2024. That's a decision for months from now. No decision has been made at this point. Our goal and our focus right now is input from the public and all of you on the content of the traffic relief plan. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
I do have one question. Out of the 62% number figure that you gave, how many actual people in this area were polled? Was there a figure?
Off the top, I don't know off the top of my head. I can get you that information. So, what we have done in each of the, we'll call them the subregions of the county, we've made sure it's a statistically significant number of residents in the area that are being polled so that there is validity to the poll. Our pollster also makes sure that it is a well-balanced group of voters that is polled. The goal is not to have people on, you know, any of the extreme positions of taxation, specifically trying to make sure that there's gender balance, that there's balance in political affiliations, and that there's balance amongst the communities. I can get you the number of how many in this zone. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you very much. One more question. Does the RCTC believe that there is a way to ultimately relieve traffic congestion without the use of express lanes through our I-15 corridor here?
I hesitate to speak on what all of the elected officials on the RCTC board believe, but what I can tell you is that the RCTC board has deliberately looked at investing in express lanes because that is one of the only ways to manage demand. It's one of the only ways that we can have reliable, predictable bus service. So, I know for many people who make the commute from here all the way down to San Diego say, gosh, I wish I had a nice luxury bus that I could hop on, have a reliable trip to work. They're stuck in the same trap as everyone else. So, express lanes do provide that as well. We are currently analyzing the opportunity for an express lane on the I-10 corridor between the 60 and the 111. We'll see if that pencils out financially. What I will say about the stretch here from the 215 to the county line, when RCTC adopted its I-15 plan, it was for express lanes from the 60 down to Lake Elsinore, from Lake Elsinore to the Y here, it would just be a carpool lane. And then ultimately, if San Diego ever decided to come north with their express lanes, that express lanes would make sense here in Temecula. Do I think express lanes right here in Temecula make sense without improvements in San Diego? Probably not.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, I do have a question. So, as this sales tax would be created, does the amount that like this area creates stay in this area? Or is this like a giant pool fund that it goes into? And, you know, we could be basically financing Coachella versus Temecula.
So, not Coachella. So, we cannot use money generated in Western County. And so, in Temecula, Marietta, Fanning, Riverside, anything in West, we cannot use money generated here and spend it in the Coachella Valley. The Coachella Valley, money generated in the Coachella Valley stays in the Coachella Valley, and money that's generated in Blythe stays in Blythe. And there is a firewall between those geographic regions. Does each jurisdiction get 100% of the money generated in its city back? No, because most of these investments are for regional projects.
Okay, thank you. All right, no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're off to board and commission report, and we have the Ready Commission.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmembers and Mayor Stewart. I will be reporting on behalf of the Ready Commission. The Ready Commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, resurfaces, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. And our last meeting was on January 11th, 2024. The commission selected Commissioner Eric Faulkner to serve as chair during that meeting and myself, Crystal Pastorian, to serve as vice chair for 2024. The commission received a presentation from Riverside University Health Services from Corinne Awad, Director of Development at RUHS Foundation, on health services in the community. The foundation funds life-saving programs, education, and equipment, and puts in many volunteer hours to support a healthy Riverside County, including Temecula. Topics of discussion included RUHS's locations in the county and in Temecula, its purpose to support residents in need, mostly underinsured and uninsured, through pediatrics, women's health, and trauma services, mobile health clinics, foster care, child abuse and neglect units, partnerships with law enforcement, and the Festival of Trees, pinwheels for prevention, celebration of hope, and birthday circle events. Other topics included the elimination of barriers such as transportation costs, language, and cultural norms. Areas of need are determined by different departments based on data, behavioral health services in schools, and special needs partnerships. More information on them is available upon your request. We have our next commissioner meeting, which is February 8th. We invite everyone to attend here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. We will be celebrating African-American History Month. Everyone is invited. And lastly, we are very, very happy to congratulate Chair Faulkner, who could not be here tonight because he is a first-time grandfather. So, we wish him well, and we're cheering for everybody, and they're all in good health. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, well, thank you. All right, public safety report. We have Cal Fire Ryan Lubin.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. We'll start out with last year's total calls for 2023 for the Temecula Fire Service. Last year, we ran 10,221 calls in total within the city limits. In December itself, we ran six fires, 101 traffic collisions, and 607 medical emergencies within the city limits. Next slide, please. You'll see our prevention section ran or did 420 plan checks and reviews, new construction inspections of 549, and 166 annual mandated inspections from last month. Next slide. For our emergency management and emergency manager, the highlights so far for the month of December where they held their third annual Citizen Corps Volunteer Awards banquet. And within that, they recognized the 20-year anniversary of the TCC. So, big accomplishment there, 20 years. As you can see, we do have multiple grants from spanning back from 2022 all the way into this year now that we're just in the first month of the year, applying for grants from Riverside County EMD, reimbursement grants, and so on and so forth. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to public comments.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do have about 11 public comments on non-agenda items, as well as for item number four under consent. So, if you want to take that item after the non-agenda as well at that time, or?
I say, let's do it now with the, at the tail end of the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And please, since there's so many people, make sure you watch the clock because at three minutes, we will cut you off. So, we just want to make it fair to everybody who's here. So, watch the clock, please. Thank you.
The first speaker is Thomas Lashley, to be followed by Jeanette Chun.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Thomas Lashley, and I'm a Catholic American who also happens to be Level One, high-functioning autistic. According to Autistic Minority International, the only UN-recognized self-avertcy group for autistics, there is ongoing research aiming for paternal genetic, sorry, prenatal genetic screening that would allow the detection of fetuses, quote, "at risk for autism." This is already the case for trisomy 21, better known as Down Syndrome. This research, like Down Syndrome, is nothing short of a movement towards eugenics and elimination of all people with autism. This is similar to like what is currently happening with people with Down Syndrome in that Western nations have already aborted and/or euthanized many thousands of Down Syndrome people. Iceland, for instance, has almost zero Down Syndrome people left alive with only about one to two Down Syndrome births a year. Currently, there are approximately 70 million autistic people all over the world, making up 1% of the world population. If this prenatal screening becomes available and legal to detect the, quote, "risk of autism," how many autistics will be killed in the womb? You can't cure Down Syndrome through abortion and euthanasia just as you can't cure autism through abortion and euthanasia. According to Planned Parenthood's own website, Margaret Sanger, who is the founder of Planned Parenthood, believed in eugenics and advocated for the, quote, "Negro Project." She strategically placed Planned Parenthood facilities in African-American and minority neighborhoods in order to promote, quote, "better traits" among the American population and used African-American medical professionals to staff them. She was also a member of the American Eugenics Society and a supporter of the Ku Klux Klan, who she considered her, who considered her as an ally. This is wrong. What if, in the case of African-Americans, the next MLK is aborted? In the case, and in the case of autism, the next Albert Einstein or Elon Musk? It is true. Most abortion providers have moved on from using eugenics based off of race, but instead, they are implementing eugenics based off of disability. Children with mental disabilities have an inherent dignity, just like everyone else. The Fifth Amendment of the Constitution says that we shall not be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process, which means that every life has inherent dignity. I implore the councilmen here to support the lives of every person and all their endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeanette Chun, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Hi, guys. It's been a year since I've been able to be here and been a long absence. Usually, I come in at least twice a year to update you guys on how birth choice is going. As most of you know, I'm the CEO of Birth Choice Centers, and we have our main center, our flagship here in Temecula. My absence, as most of you know, is due to my husband going home to be with the Lord last year, and so I needed some time to adjust to that situation. But I have started back full-time last week, and so I'm excited to get back up and going again. Yesterday is the National Sanctity of Human Life Day, and Ronald Reagan in 1988 had promoted that as a proclamation. And so, today, I wanted to come and read that proclamation to you guys in honor of Sanctity of Life Day yesterday. It says, "January 14th, 1988, by the President of the United States of America, a proclamation. America was given a great gift to the world, a gift that drew upon the accumulated wisdom derived from centuries of experiments and self-government, a gift that has been irrevocably changed, a gift that has irrevocably changed..." a gift that has been irrevocably changed, a gift that has irrevocably changed humanity's future. Our gift is twofold. The Declaration is a cardinal principle of all just law of the God-given, unalienable rights possessed by every human being, and the example of our determination to secure those rights and to defend them against every challenge through the generations. Our Declaration in defense of our rights have made us and kept us free and sent, and have sent a tide of hope and inspiration around the globe. One of those unalienable rights, as the Declaration of Independence affirms so eloquently, is the right to life. In the 15 years since the Supreme Court's decision in Roe v. Wade, however, Americans unborn have been denied their right to life. Among the tragic and unspeakable results in the past decade and a half have been the loss of a life of 22 million infants before birth, the pressure and anguish of countless women and girls who are driven to abortion, and a cheapening of our respect for the human person and the sanctity of human life. We are told that we may not interfere with abortion. We are told that we may not impose our morality on those who wish to allow or participate in the taking of the life of infants before birth, yet no one calls it imposing morality to prohibit the taking of life after people are born. We are told as well that there exists a right to end the lives of unborn children, yet no one can explain how such a right can exist and stark contradiction, contradiction of each person's fundamental right to life. That right to life belongs equally to babies in the womb, babies born handicapped, and the elderly or a firm. That we have killed the unborn for 15 years does not nullify this right, nor could any number of killings ever do so. The unalienable right to life is found not only in the Declaration of Independence, but also in the Constitution that every president is sworn to preserve, protect and defend. Both the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments guarantee that no person shall be deprived of life without due process of law. And so that now, if therefore I, Ronald Reagan, President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim and declare the unalienable personhood of every American." Thank you, thank you.
Next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Melissa Borbenay.
Hi, all right, so we talked about traffic. Have we thought about how we get some of those cars off the roads and not just how to expand them? We had a council member who suggested that he wanted to live in Encinitas, but couldn't, so he moved to Temecula. Is that the status quo? So now we dictate that because he can afford Temecula and somebody else can't, it's their problem and not his? Maybe he should have gotten on Encinitas's city council. We need to start developing for the workforce here. We are building a tourist trap, and that's fine. If you want to build for tourism and that helps bring money into the city, but who's going to run those businesses? That Harupa Valley Winery? Do you think that's just going to be a bunch of 16-year-olds running that business? Where does the workforce go? When my lease is up, am I going to have to come down to City Hall again and fight to keep the roof over my head because I'm going to make too much? 50K is going to be too much to keep a roof over my head? I have to fight, we, the workforce, have to fight to live within the communities we serve. Why? Why isn't the city fighting for the workforce to live within the communities they serve? In the interest of traffic? In the interest of community? In the interest of service? How will these questions get answered? Because clearly, they don't get answered here. Is city council just mascots? Or are you going to host a town hall where we can show up, ask questions of you, and you can ask questions of us? Will you take some of these questions, pass it to city staff, and then put it on another agenda so they can get answered? These are not rhetorical questions, these are questions that need answering. They're relevant questions, they're pertinent questions. Housing, housing, housing. The workforce is not just your servancy. We work here. We should be able to live here.
Next speaker is Melissa Borbenay, to be followed by Jackie Legg.
Hello, I am Melissa Borbenay, and I am here representing upward community. I can't help but to ditto everything that Laurel Lamont just stated. She didn't have my notes, but she took everything I wanted to discuss. So I'm going to, I'm going to define rhetorical, because I know she brought it up. We come here and we ask questions, and we're not asking rhetorical questions, which would be questions that we're just asking to make a statement or to have some kind of dramatic effect. We're asking questions because we're interested in the answers. And you don't seem interested or motivated to answer them. You don't answer them after we leave, even though we don't stay the whole time. We watch all of the city council meetings. So you don't answer them after we leave, you don't answer them while we're here. I know a lot of you might think that the Brown Act is a reason why you can't answer them, but it isn't. It's just a reason why you can't have a discussion on non-agenda items and take action on them. But the questions that we've asked over the last several months, last several years, we would like answers to in some form. A town hall event would be great, answering them. When you have an opportunity to chime in, that would be fantastic because we're not here just to hear ourselves speak, even though I know we like to talk. You are not marketers for the city of Temecula. Temecula is not a private corporation. You are elected officials, and you're to represent your constituents. So some of the questions we've asked along the way, what's the categories, Erin Adams? If I can ask, what are the categories of income for a blue collar, white collar, farm and service? We'd like to know what those categories are because that gives us a better idea of our numbers and of our workforce. I was here for the presentation, of course, at the beginning on the traffic relief plan. Do you know a great way to reduce traffic? Is to provide workforce housing, to consider at least the workforce. We're not talking about giving away houses, we're not talking about charity, we're not talking about people who aren't working hard, earning a paycheck, taking care of their families, paying taxes, contributing to society, contributing to the community. It's the workforce that is part of why Temecula thrives and why people want to be here and be here for Christmas and be here for the holidays and enjoy the nice wine. So they need to be considered because you're elected to represent them. And that's it.
The next speaker is Jackie Legg, to be followed by Ron Larson.
Waste my time trying to get my picture up here. I have it right here, I don't see it on the screen. There we go. So, so, hi, hi, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jackie Legg, and this is my son here. His name is Grayden, he's 11 years old. He was born November 21st, 2012. He had a genetic disorder. At two years of age, he started having infantile spasms in his brain that were devastating. He ended up in ICU in UCLA, having over 30 seizures in an hour over and over and over, and this went on for weeks. It got to the point where his body was extremely fatigued and tired. There was a big meeting with extremely educated neurologists, neurosurgeons, and they gave us the news that, you know, kids in his condition at this point don't make it. They don't make it, guess what, they were overruled by God, he did make it. Amen. I have the privilege to be his father, and my son teaches me a lot. He reveals God's grace and God's love. My soul permeates with the truth that God delights in him and, and finds great joy in my son. And guess what, my son doesn't, he's non-abator, he doesn't walk, he's non-verbal, he doesn't talk. He has a G-tube, that's God's grace. I have the pleasure of going in public and seeing people's responses with my son. He spreads smiles like wildfire, all right? He slays strongholds on the human heart like you wouldn't believe, and he doesn't have to say a word. And it's just amazing the amount of love that, that God has in and through him and spreads to others. It's remarkable, and it's a great honor to be his dad. I have a piece of paper here, just last week, a gentleman, older gentleman. This, this, this guy must have, you know, he was over 80 years old. He walked up with tears in his eyes, spoke kind words like people often do. And mind you, when people do come up and speak, the common denominator of other words is love. Love, your son and you, love, you know, it's, it's just amazing. So that's, that needs to be heard, you know, my son, you know, love, like I said, like he, he spreads love. Anyway, so this old man came up, older gentleman came up and gave me this piece of paper. The grammar's a little off, so hopefully I can read it, I don't know how much time, oh, I'm running out of time. Okay, here's the point, it says what matter, this is at the very end. What matters in this life is more than winning for ourselves. What matters in this life is helping others to win, even if it means slowing down and changing our course. But there was much more before that, and I ran out of time, sorry. But, but.
Next speaker is Ron Larson, to be followed by Slim Killens.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, City Council and staff. My name is Ron Larson, I'm a 22-year resident of Temecula. I currently have three children in the Temecula School Districts. I'm a six-year volunteer watchdog at the Barnett Elementary Schools, and I love doing it, and it's a lot of fun, but it's also interesting to watch how people behave around our school systems. Last week, I was volunteering over there, and normally I cover the first through fifth grade drop-off area in the front of the school, which is not too bad. They asked me to go down to the elementary school to watch the traffic flow and the safety of the kids. I will tell the city council and staff, I was shocked at how bad the driver situation is around that school, and at the exit area on the elementary school, there is a stop sign. Across the street at Wellesley Court, there's no stop sign. There is no traffic crosswalk there, and there should be two more stop signs, one to control left-flow traffic and one for right-flow traffic. I'm assuming this falls on you, if you want me to get, come talk to somebody privately, Mayor? I'm happy to, or any of city staff, but I think it's an important issue for protecting our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Slim Killens, to be followed by Amara Sa Kubana.
Good evening. I'm just going to read something. A professor in a world-acclaimed medical school posed this medical situation an ethical issue to his students. Here's the family history. The father has syphilis, the mother has TB. They already have four children. The first is blind, the second has died, the third is deaf, the fourth has TB. Now the mother is pregnant again. The parents came to you for advice. They're willing to have an abortion if you decide they should. What do you say? The students gave various individual opinions, and then the professor asked them to break into small groups for consultation. All of the groups came back to report that they would recommend abortion. "Congratulations," the professor said, "you just took the life of Beethoven." And considering this, the young man spoke about his son. He would be dead now because abortion is legal in America. Reproductive rights. Father has no say. Pay child support, but I don't want it. Well, the woman has the total choice. Man says nothing, and leaders like you make these decisions. So the woman cannot get pregnant on her own, but if she doesn't want the baby, you can kill it because somebody lied. The scientist lied and said it's not human. It's not a salamander. Is it a lizard? No, it's a human being, but it doesn't have rights only if it's in a car crash. If the mother's in a car crash and then the baby, or if it's Scott Peterson who claims, claimed to have murdered his wife and a baby. Where do you guys get this nonsense from? You guys make decisions as you go along. See what the wind, let me see what the winds say, what is politically correct? Okay, let's go that way, then I can get a promotion. Remember American slavery in Nazi Germany? They did the same thing some of you were doing, and you always call it love. We're doing it because we love. Liars don't know the definition of love, and pathological liars don't know how to love.
Next speaker is Amara Sa Kubana, to be followed by Jack Marston.
Hello, my name is Amara Sa Kubana, and I am a Temecula local. I'm here to speak on the sanctity of life. The value of life matters to me because I am a person. I'm also a woman, I am Hispanic, and I am disabled. I love my friends and my family, I have been blessed with a wonderful full-time job, and I am an active member of our community. I beat every odd, and I deserve the same right to life as anyone. I'm so thankful that my mother chose life, or I wouldn't be here today, standing before you. I'm an advocate at Birth Choice's flagship center in Temecula. Every day, I see Birth Choice help members of my minority community by supplying them with clothes, food, diapers, and most importantly, support. Women choose abortion because they believe they have no other choice. Many minorities like myself call Riverside County our home. I would like to say that many of us were heartbroken over the recent opening of Planned Parenthood in our neighboring town, Marietta. I remember protesting on the street when the building was still being leased. Planned Parenthood was founded on racism and hate and continues to honor their founder with their statistics. As a community, we all came together to express our severe disapproval of abortion centers, but our voices were not heard, just like the voices of the unborn are not being heard. I am here to speak for those who have been silenced. I am here to support the council members that are listening to the community that elected them, council members like Jessica Alexander. I would like to close with this Bible verse in Proverbs. "Open your mouth for the speechless, in the cause of all who are appointed to die." Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack Marston, to be followed by Francisco Urbina.
Hello, good evening, my name is Jack Marston. I've been a Temecula resident my whole life. Life is an incredible miracle. We are, we are all deserving of a chance of life, no matter what the circumstance. All life is precious and valuable. If my mom had chose abortion over life, I would not be here alive today, enjoying the freedoms of our great nation. I believe everyone deserves a chance at life, no matter what the circumstances of conception. Thank you.
Next speaker is Francisco Urbina, to be followed by Greg Langworthy. And Mr. Urbina, you also submitted another one under non-agenda, but we only accept one. And Mr. Urbina, um, you also submitted another one under non-agenda, but we only accept one speaker slip under non-agenda. So you're more than welcome to make comments regarding RCTC's presentation during your three minutes right now.
Well, three minutes is not enough to speak. In the past, five minutes has been allocated, but anyway, that should change. I disagree with a lot of what the Riverside County Transportation Commissioner said. We don't need more taxes. We need better fiscal responsibility of our tax dollars. The state of California is facing a projected sixty-eight billion dollar budget deficit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. How did we get here? Uh, we have that, I'll just say stupid white elephant, uh, high-speed rail that I voted against it because Margarita McCoy, the former chairwoman of the Urban Regional Planning Department at Cal Poly Pomona, where I graduated from nineteen eighty-four, said that all public works, transit projects require subsidies of billions of dollars in order to keep the fares low. That, uh, clackety-clank steel wheels and rails is ancient technology. If it was gonna be a high-speed rail, it should have been maglev. I'd rather fly Southwest Airlines flight if I book it two weeks in advance. Anyway, the other thing is the First Amendment constitutional right freedom of speech. I'm disappointed that both the Temecula City Council and the Amarieta City Council start in their meetings at 6:00 PM when many people cannot attend. Something like sixty-five to seventy percent of the working age adults in southwest Riverside County have to commute one hour or more each way. And as far as I know, tell me if I'm wrong, the Amarieta and Temecula City Councils do not allow public participation at city council meetings via Zoom, Skype, or a phone call like other cities do, such as Palm Springs and Beaumont. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, Aaron Adams is still my neighbor in Vintage Reserve, but I used to work for the City of Temecula Planning Department. And if any of you watched the Tournament of Roses Parade, the major sponsor was Honda. What is the future? Flying cars. Uh, that has been something that's been researched at UC Davis, all the major auto companies of the world, flying cars. But now that we have drones, drones can have four propellers, so we have a failsafe system because what goes up must come down. And I did wanna say that in two thousand seventeen, I had a, I crashed into a Toyota Prius, not my fault. And community services officer at the time, uh, Ms. Nordstrom provided excellent customer service. Uh, thank you very much for your comments and I agree with the previous speaker that we need to have more town hall meetings. Thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Langworthy to be followed by the final public comment on non-agenda, Hanan Rickard.
Good evening, Council. I just have a, a suggestion and then a rationale for my suggestion. Uh, I'd like you to consider, um, making January, the month of January, Sanctity of Life Month. I think that's consistent with our consistent with our constitution and, and with your role as, as a govern, uh, the local government of us in Temecula. So just reading from the Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal and are endowed with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that to secure these rights, governments, that's local government, state government, national government, are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. So we've elected you to protect these rights and these rights are non-negotiable rights. The right to life is not negotiable. You can't have a vote to take away someone's life, just like we know that during slavery, it was wrong to vote to take away a person's right to freedom and to enslave them. We knew that that was wrong for years and years and finally a civil war settled it. So we don't wanna settle this the same way we, we, um, settle these issues with debate, with a republican form of government. Electing you to represent us, to honor our constitution and to have civil debate and vote to promote these rights. And that's why I think it may be a good idea for you guys to at least to consider declaring January Sanctity of Life Month to promote our right to life. Thank you very much.
The final speaker under non-agenda is Hanan Rickard and we'll go ahead and take the, um, public speaker for consent item number four, Eddie DeR, after that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was just, uh, well, kinda go along with the last speaker about the, uh, Constitution. I think there's a great disconnect from where we came from with the founding fathers of this nation and, uh, where we are now. And I think the, the the main thing we're kinda lacking is, uh, understanding the contract we have with the Supreme Judge of all the earth that was going to, that, uh, helped our, our, for, our founding fathers, uh, uh, give them the, the grace and the providence to, uh, overthrow the oppress, our, uh, their oppressors, the British. And so we appealed to the God of nature. And now we, as, as scriptures, um, which by the way, was the first textbook in the schools, um, would talk about in the last days that there would be a loss of natural affection. And I would just go along, uh, also with that thought that, uh, what we see, every, everything that's is good in the eyes of God is defined by life. Um, that's according to scriptures and according to your God-given conscience, that everything that contributes to life and sustains life, uh, is love. Uh, is, is that which is right according to God, who is the Creator and the sustainer of life. So if your definition of what is good, uh, is not lining up with life, uh, and nature, then it's not good. And I'll give one more example of what the point I'm trying to make is, uh, sorry, just taking a minute. We, we, we have this, uh, in my estimation, our greatest crisis we have, uh, besides the, uh, abortion issue is the, is the, uh, being born gay. And and I wanna just come against that thought of saying that it's okay because you're not hurting anyone, that it's, um, it's not natural, just like, uh, stealing is not natural, although someone may be born with a proclivity to do such things. Just something to think about if it's not natural and if it's not, uh, contributing to life, sustaining life. It's not good and right according to God, who we have a contract with. Thank you.
The final speaker for our consent calendar is Eddie DeR.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councils and everybody. My name is Eddie DeR. I'm the president of Astor Construction Services. I'm here to talk about item number four, which is a splash pad bed. We were the lowest bidder. Our number was one million seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, which is hundred thousand dollars less than the second one. The city staff sent us a letter saying we were non-responsive because we did not complete the list of subcontractors. Which is not true because we did submit the list of subcontractors. And here what it is here. But they claim that I did not submit some of the columns, which in my opinion, we should not complete them. Because this bed is a lump sum bed and has no schedule of values. So we were three bidders. Astor Construction, we kept it blank because I see it, this is the correct way of doing it. And I have a master degree in civil engineering. And I did teach in San Diego State University estimating and construction management course for four years. The second two, one of them, he listed one, two, three, which is wrong because we have only one bid item for the whole amount. The second one, he listed one, 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 one. Also it's wrong. It should be blank. And there's one subcontractor, he kept it blank. So why we were not responsive and the others were good. To make my point valid, when I think what, what they want, they want the percentage completion, like what's a percentage the prime contract is gonna be doing, which is minimum of fifty percent. When you have no schedule of value, there's no meaning to this. How can you prove that those percentages are correct when you have no schedule of values? And in the bid contract, they said you should submit the schedule of value when you start work and before or, and with the billing. What if we were wrong? What if I said the electrical is five percent and the reality is fifty percent? How can you do it? And another example, one of the, like us and another prime, we use the same subcontractor, which is hydrology. Our number was eight hundred, his number is one million sixty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, should we pull this item?
Yeah, my, my, my recommendation would be to take the consent calendar minus item four and allow Mr. Thomas to just speak briefly to the speaker's comments, uh, related to that item. And we'll take up item four after the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so that's what we'll do. We'll go, oh, any city council reports, go there first. I'm gonna go first. I had one slide tonight. Pull that up here. There it is. We have a new mural unveiling on February seventh, twenty twenty-four at 5:00 PM at the Sam Hicks Monument Park. Uh, this, this month it was created by the National Charity League of Temecula Amarieta Chapter. The title is Year of the Dragon and the public is welcome to join the artists and their families. And this mural will be up until the end of February, so feel free to come out, 5:00 PM, February seventh, Sam Hicks Monument Park. Hope to see you there. Alright. Go for it.
Alright, well, I have a couple of things here to share, just some highlights that have happened over the last two weeks that I've been a privileged to be a part of. Uh, and it just makes me reflect on how incredible this community is, how supportive this community is with each other and how so many of us go outside of our way to ensure uh, that people are being helped and that people are being taken care of. And so I had an opportunity, uh, with two areas this last weekend to be able to be a part of and I was just very appreciative of it. So we had, uh, gotten invited to the canine support team graduation. And if I can tell you, if you didn't know what this was, I didn't know too much about it. Um, it is about, this was all of these individuals who have disabilities who are needing dogs for support. And I was able to learn about all the individuals from children to veterans that are there who are relying on these, uh, on these dogs. And what it takes for people to get these dogs, all the way from puppies that there are people being trained, or people are training these dogs up from the time they're puppies. There are, um, there are shelters, our local shelters such as, uh, and then animals of Friends in Valley are being included in part of this to be able to help out the community in general with these dogs and raising them. And I've learned really that it gives people the empowerment, their friend, their, uh, they have friendships with these animals, the safety that's provided with these animals, the comfort, unconditional love that they're, that they're receiving that maybe they've never had in their lives. I also had the privilege to learn that this organization also has stepped into the, uh, the jails. And so there are inmates who are needing comfort as well, who have disabilities. And they bring, they actually go into the jails themselves to be able to bring these canines, to help them to, uh, really feel valued. And especially they're finding it really helps during rehab, excuse me, during rehab. So that was just one of the things that was a real blessing to me to be able to be a part of and to see and to just kinda meet some of these individuals. Uh, the next one that I had a big part of was with, uh, Community Mission of Hope. I don't say a big part, a very small part. Uh, was with Community of Hope, uh, Community Mission of Hope here at the city. So I was so proud to see that our city was taking part of a food donation here. And I just wanted to say first off, thank you to our staff. Thank you for everybody who contributed to that because it was, it was amazing to see the food coming in. Uh, we are really being able to see that there is a need. I would say all nonprofits are really seeing that the community in itself is in real need, looking at the food that's, um, that's not in their pantries because of the prices going skyrocketing and their living expenses as well. So I have a short video just to be able to promote individuals to continue to bring their canned goods and their items down to Community Mission of Hope and our other food pantry, um, helpers or, you know, just organizations in the area. So if you can play that, that'd be great.
Hi, Temecula. This is City Councilwoman Jessica Alexander and I am here at the Welcome Center to be able to drop off some goods for Community Mission of Hope. And I'm just inviting all of you to come out and to donate to this cause. Here with me is Heather and she's gonna explain to you a little bit more about it. Hi Heather, thank you for coming.
Hi Jessica, thanks so much for having us. We're really, really appreciative of this whole community and coming together this week to give some food and some goodies to Community Mission of Hope. We serve, um, over four hundred families a week here in the valley, so every single thing you give is helping those families eat healthy, good food. I wanted to let you guys know a couple of things we would love to have is peanut butter and jelly. Sandwiches. You know we love them. So they're a favorite of our clients as well. Um, please don't bring expired food. Sometimes people think, look, we got our fridge. We love that idea, but it's not really helpful. We wanna give healthy, sustainable, good products to all of our friends here in the community, so that would be really helpful too.
Heather, thank you again for sharing all the information with us because it's important for the residents to know what they should bring. The question that I have for you as well is, are you seeing an increase in need in our community and what does that look like?
Absolutely. Thanks for asking that. Um, we are seeing an increase and as you know, right now, just globally, we feel like there's a food and housing and security and that is literally why we exist, is to combat food and housing and security. And right here in our community, we have seen a lot more families in this last year that have needed help, just on a regular basis. It doesn't mean that they have zero food. It just means they need a little bit of extra help to get by. And we can give a family lots of food for an entire week for only twenty-five dollars. So that's another thing. If you don't have food to drop off, but you'd rather just give twenty-five dollars, you can know that you're feeding a local family for an entire week. So this is pretty awesome.
So Temecula, we are here till the twenty-first of January and we just wanna welcome all of your donations and we just ask that right now, you can't stop. You continue to give beyond just this week because our food pantries are in real need. Thank you so much.
So again, the, the food pantry drive might be over, but that doesn't mean that our giving can't be over. So I just wanna encourage all of you who are here, who are at home, to continue to give. Uh, even just a couple of cans of, uh, of food is just gonna be huge to really be able to sustain a family. So thank you again for everybody who participated in that. It's a real blessing to see. My last and third item is, is important. Uh, I think it should be important for all of us. All of us have grandkids and babies and I think it was, uh, Eric Faulkner just had his grandbaby. My sister just had her baby today actually too. And so it's pretty neat to be able to see, uh, how important this month is that each one of us have been gifted and valued. Each one of us has worth and are worthy. And so today, I, I don't wanna have the argument of abortion. What I wanna be able to do is celebrate the lives of the individuals that are here today that have been given the opportunity to pour into our communities, have been given the opportunity to love one another and support one another in exactly the same ways that we just saw of what I just talked about. Helping with animals, helping each other, and that's what this community is about. It is the neatest community. I am so blessed to be a part of it. And every little, I'm, I'm calling our smallest little neighbors, they are important. And so I just wanna say thank you to everybody who has, uh, contributed and is still contributing. If you can roll the video, please. you can roll the video, please.
Life. It's precious. It's beautiful. God's offer for life is that He came to give it and give it abundantly. Today, there are two views of life constantly at battle with one another. First, the sanctity of life view, which says that all life is declared to be good by God's own standard. Every life is God-bred, God-ordained. We are all image bearers. Every human being is endowed with dignity and worth. Though we may be broken or damaged, we all reflect Him. We reason, we love, we are protective, creative. Every one of us bears His image and should be treated with the utmost of respect and value. The other view that is at war for our minds and our affections is the quality of life. The quality of life says that your size, your development, your beauty, your burden of society is what is determining your value, or whether you should live or die. We believe this is wrong, because it is God who determines our value and our purpose. We grieve over the lives lost, and we say, no more, no more. Join us in protecting life. Join us in celebrating life, because every life matters.
Thank you all for coming out. This was maybe not for everybody, but it was for the majority of the people that need to hear about how important everybody in here is and everybody who is to come, who are going to be our new little neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you. Zach, do you have anything?
Nothing for me tonight. I'm here, Stuart. Thank you, though.
All right. I do have just a little clarification. We, we were talking, or the two young ladies were talking about workforce housing. And I just want to kind of reiterate that we have 77 affordable housing units coming online just down the road in Uptown Jefferson. We have another 52 affordable housing units coming online right off of Inez. And I think it's like 60, how many is off of Pujol there?
It's 60 units, Vine Creek. That's right, 60 units.
So, so 60 more units. And if you notice, that's scattered throughout the entire city. And all of our affordable housing units are scattered throughout the entire, they're not located in one general specific area. So just to let you know, we are doing what we can do about workforce housing. We, we find value in our community and in our workers who work in our community, and they want to live in our community. And we understand that, and we're doing everything we possibly can to, to make that happen. So there's, there's a lot more affordable housing that's probably going to come online, especially as Uptown Jefferson continues to develop out, because that's, that's also an affordable housing area. So, so we're working hard at trying to bring affordable housing to our workforce. So just to let you know, we aren't ignoring anybody. So, all right, let's go on to the consent calendar. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but number one, waived reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions including, included in the agenda. Number two, approved action minutes of January 9, 2024. Number three, approved list of demands. Number four, we're going to pass on, but it's award construction contract to California Water, Waters Development, Inc. for DBA, California Waters for Community Recreation Center Splash Pad and Shade Structure Project, PW 21-07. Number five, approved second amendment to the agreement with Mike, Mike's Precision Welding for welding services. And that's it. So.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion second. And remember, we're, we're not voting on four yet. We're going to get a staff report on that. So please vote.
I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kelfis?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
And Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, so that passes 4-0. Could we get a staff report on item number four?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So item four is recommendation to award the construction contract for the CRC Splash Pad project. And as the speaker mentioned, we did receive three bids for that project. One of the requirements that we have that be submitted with a bid is a list of subcontractors. And on that list, a general contractor is required to list their subcontractors, as well as the percentage of the work that they're completing as part of the project. And one of the reasons for that is, one of our requirements is that the general contractor complete at least 50% of the work on the project. Unfortunately, Astor Construction submitted their subcontractors list, but did not list the percentage of work that each of their subcontractors would be performing. The second little bidder did submit that list with the percentages. And because Astor's list did not include the percentages, we determined that their bid was non-responsive because they didn't include the percentages of their subcontractors that would be performing on the project. So that's the reason why we deem their bid non-responsive and we're recommending that the contract be awarded to California Waters.
Okay. Any questions? So is, I have a question. So is this, is what you just described, is it typical of all bids that we put out?
Yes. The one little bit of difference on this one is on many of our projects, we do have multiple bid items. And that subcontractor's list requires that you identify which bid item a subcontractor is working on, as well as the percentage. This project, it was bid as a lump sum, so there was only one bid item. But it's still required that each subcontract be listed, as well as the percentage of the work that they were doing.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, was, were any of the organizations able to contact you for more information on the breakdown on how to fill out the form if they needed?
No, we didn't receive any questions prior to the bid. We did contact Astor after the bid to inform them that we were declaring their bid non-responsive because of that reason. And they did submit that list with those percentages after, but because it was after the bid, we were not able to accept that.
But there was no phone calls prior to, it's my understanding?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Well, what do you guys want to do?
Motion.
Motion to approve the contract?
Yes, motion to approve.
With all the findings in, that are listed there.
Yep.
Second. All right, it's been motion second. Please roll call vote.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kelfis?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
And Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
That passes?
All right, that passes 5-0. So.
4-0.
Do we need anything else? 4-0, oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. All right, so we will move into Temecula Community Service District meeting with Zoom Zach.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Stewart. I'll now call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam Deputy City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move straight to our consent calendar. We do have one item. Item number six is approve action minutes of January 9, 2024. And I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, Madam Deputy City Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote?
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Kelfis?
Yes.
Or Mayor Protim, I'm sorry. And Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
And Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes.
All right, thank you very much. That passes 4-0. We'll move to our Director of Community Services. Do we have a report to us?
Yes, we do. We just have two items I'd like to bring to everyone's attention this evening. The first one is that we will be having a community meeting regarding the design of the new skate park over at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This is actually a redesign of the existing skate park, and this will be the third community meeting that we've held on this topic. So for anyone interested in use of the skate park, or the design, what it should look like, this is your opportunity to come and share your opinion. That will be held on Thursday, January 25 at 5:00 PM at the Conference Center just across the Breeze Way. Next slide, please. And then we'd like to invite everybody to come out to a ribbon cutting for Long Canyon Creek Park. We have completely renovated the playground, and this will be the great reopening for that playground. That's on Thursday, February 8 at 10:00 AM. The park is located at 29657 North General Kearney Road. And this is the first of three parks that we will be renovating this year. The next ribbon cutting will be a week later, and then we'll have a third one a few weeks after that. So we're very excited to be able to cut the ribbon on some really beautiful new amenities for our residents. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much, Director Teresa. Exciting times in Temecula. General Manager, anything this evening?
Nothing further than I, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Board of Directors, anything?
Nothing.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the TCSD meeting to our next scheduled one.
All right, so I'll re-adjourn the Temecula Housing, oh, no, Joint Meeting of Temecula Finance Authority and the City Council. Madam Secretary, please note we're all here. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. So we have item number seven, which is on the consent calendar, which is approve and adopt resolutions of intention to form a CFD 23-02 Prado, authorize the levy of special taxes on property in CFD number 23-02, incur bonded indebtedness for CFD number 23-02, and approve related documents and agreements. Anybody want to? Approve?
Motion.
All right. Do we have a staff report on this?
Would you like it pulled? It's on consent calendar. Would you like it pulled for a staff report?
No staff report needed.
Happy to provide you some information if need be.
I think we're good.
I will second the motion.
All right. It's been motion second. Please roll call vote.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kelfis?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. So that passes 4-0. All right, so Executive Director report.
Nothing further than I.
All right. Anything from the council or board? None hearing. We will move on to, we'll reconvene the city, Temecula City Council meeting. Department reports. Number eight is Community Development Department Monthly Report.
Mr. Mayor, all these department reports are just receiving files.
Got it. Okay. So any items for future agenda? All right, so we will move on to City Manager's report.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to invite the community and make it known. We have a joint city council planning commission workshop scheduled a week from Thursday, February 1. We'll be across the hall in the Conference Center from 9:00 to 12:00. This is to pick up where we left off in late winter, early winter, I guess, on the topic of alcohol, Old Town, as well as live music and entertainment. And I know that's very important, and we're going to just kind of pick up part two on policy discussions and best practices and get some direction from the city council. Certainly want to hear from the community, the restaurant tours, and those folks that have a vested interest in Old Town and Old Town safety. So inviting everybody out for that. February 1, 9:00 to 12:00, Joint Meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council.
All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. We had a closed session this evening on the case of Solana Winchester LLC versus City of Temecula. And the council, by a 4-0 vote, directed the city attorney's office to defend the city in that litigation.
Thank you.
That was all.
Very good. Well, with that being said, we are done for February, no, we're done until February 13. So we will adjourn.